Ms. Louie, there you are. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Laura Louie. My husband Barton and I have two children, one who is in sixth grade and attends Canada's second year school, another who is in second grade and attends the school of choice. I am a 2002 Fergus Falls College School graduate. I am the creator of the Fergus Falls Green K-6 Parents Against Mask Mandate Facebook group. I want to start off by saying that I have been completely overwhelmed by our community, its support, its prayers, and so much more. Thank you for being brave and for speaking up for our freedom to choose, and for helping in efforts to put decisions like masks in our students back into the hands of parents. Many of us feel like this is so much more than just a mask mandate issue. Where does this stop? Right now it's masks, then vaccines? How about the critical risk theory curriculum? When do parents actually get to be heard? When do parents and taxpayers get to choose what is right for their family and for our community? It is time we stand together to make our voices heard. I believe the silent majority is tired of me pushed around by the noisy few. I want to reiterate that this is about our freedom to choose. I quote a very brave Southwest Airlines pilot who spoke out on social media today. He said, "You may support the mask and vaccine mandates because they fall in line with your current beliefs, but if we let this happen now, there will be a day when you are told what to do and you will not follow in line with your beliefs." We need to stand together and unite in our freedom to choose. I want to be very clear that this Facebook group was not created as an attack on the school board, our teachers, or our administration. We are here to support them all, including our students and parents. We need to work together to keep our staff and students in school while listening to the needs and wants of the parents and taxpaying citizens of our community. I want to directly address the media here today and remind you that it is your responsibility to present fair, honest, and complete coverage of controversial issues to your communities. I respectfully ask that statements made tonight by the school board and all of the others that are brave enough to stand up and speak are not taken out of context but represented accurately in your reporting. I also want to address the school board. You all have been elected by the taxpaying members of this community, and your job is to represent the majority. I also want to remind you of some of the policies that are stated in Section 250, your policies, beliefs, operating, operating on ends, objectives, and strategies. A healthy lifestyle, and I'm quoting, "A healthy lifestyle is a personal responsibility. Individuals have the right of input into decisions that affect them. Emotional and physical well-being cannot exist in an abusive environment. Each individual is responsible for his/her own choices and the results of those choices. We will involve staff, students, parents, and community in planning, funding, implementing, and evaluating programs in an ongoing process. We will change our policies, programs, and practices which are ineffective." Can I say? Thank you. Lastly, I want to address those that will be speaking tonight and all of those in attendance. Remember that we are here to work together to create a solution. We need to treat each other with respect and grace in difficult times like this, but also be firm in what we have to say and in the statements that we make. We cannot hope the way we feel, but we can choose the way we act. Thank you for being here tonight and for supporting our school board, teachers, staff, and students.
Thank you, Ms. Louie. I appreciate your courage in speaking. And then, if Mike Van Horn would like to proceed to the front, be close to the podium.
Hello, board members. I don't envy any of you in your position. I just want to say, and I want you to know I've been praying through all week, and my heart just feels very much well for all of you in what the position that you're in. So I just want you to know that. But I just today ask that you respectfully consider the things that are on my heart. And what it really boils down to is to remind you of who you represent as a public servant. I too have been voted on a war before, and I know the drama that that can entail. And being on board means putting your own personal preferences aside and responsibly representing the people who voted for you. One personal preference that I have to know is of one board member sitting up there, I have a screenshot where he has admitted on social media that he would like to see our school district mandating the vaccine. But I hope that these and other personal preferences get set aside as you make decisions and consider what the people you represent desire. Going back to my experience on board, when I keep trying to vote on things, there was a few times when I personally felt we should vote one way, but I knew the people that I represented felt differently. And I reminded myself often, how would my people want me to vote on this? How can I represent them? And I would try to ensure that I was voting accordingly. I was there to serve and represent the majority of the people that voted for that position. Now, throughout this year, and you can even see, and Mr. Drake has even admitted, and I quote, "Masking among students and staff have been sparse." I think everyone who has eyes to see can see that the majority of the people that you represent are not masking. They have clearly demonstrated their beliefs and preferences. And so, may I remind you, you have a responsibility in decision-making to represent the majority. It's not your job to make decisions based on what our society thinks. It's not your job to cave into culture and those who want reverse and hateful curriculum. It's not your job to pander to the minority. It's not your job to ensure what you personally believe happens. You are here to serve your people in whatever way you can. And I know you're not going to make everyone happy. That's impossible. But you are called to serve the majority of us who voted for you here. And if you're unsure what the parents and staff stand, then I encourage you to send out a survey so that you can vote accordingly. Or if you can't let the parents actually vote on issues like this, let them make the decisions concerning how they should handle all things concerning their children. I've walked this school district, and I think we have some of the best staff and teachers around, and I'm proud to be part of an amazing community. And all of us here, all of us here, have such a desire to support you, and we hope that we're able to, if you can show that you can lead us as true public servants in the coming days and months. And to those of you in leadership who actually still desire to serve and represent your people, I have this message for you. You may have lost your vision. You may be weary and tired, but I want to encourage you to not give up. Don't go weary while doing your proper time to wheelbreak a harvest. Don't be afraid to stand up to the minority or culture in what you know is the right thing to do. Have courage and listen to your people. And if you remember nothing else from this night, maybe these words may etch into your hearts and minds today. I represent the people, and every decision you make from this day forward, may you hear in your heart, "I represent the people." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Put your mind, please, no fogging or packing who won and who would want to continue being present and get respect. Mr. Van Horn, you are welcome to speak. And then, I would, and Ms. Lee is coming out.
Most children develop natural immunity to COVID without showing signs of illness. And among those who fall ill, there's a much lower death rate than that of the flu. We can argue that effectiveness of masks are vague, but we have never masked during flu season. According to Jeff Drake, according to Jeff Drake's chart, COVID infection among Fergus Falls children is medicinal and illness is nearly nonexistent. Jeff Drake at the school board meeting September 28th stated, "We are currently, we are certainly willing to host a vaccine clinic at the point where the younger students, the five to 11-year-olds, are approved for the vaccine." At this meeting, the superintendent and principals began wearing masks. A week later, Jeff Drake sent the email stating, "Grades pre-k to sixth grade will be required to wear a mask." Later in this email, Jeff stated, "Please consider vaccination as a mitigation strategy if your child is 12 or older." Because of these, I believe the mask mandate is a vaccine campaign. The virus that causes COVID-19 called SARS-CoV-2 has been found by the USDA in 40% of the deer herd. That means there's a cannibal reservoir for the virus, can see the state. Those who fell ill in 2003 to the SARS virus, which is SARS-CoV-1, still show immunity 17 years later. The outbreaks of the Delta variant in the highly-vaxxed countries of Israel and Britain have shown that the mRNA vaccines lose efficacy in six months or less. That means boosters every six months for the rest of your life if you do not acquire natural immunity. Children in the high-risk, children are in a high-risk group for heart inflammation or myocarditis from the vaccine. Pfizer and the country of England are researching why. Countries have boundaries of mRNA vaccines in children because of the risks. Deaths for teenage boys in the United Kingdom increased 700% in one week since the COVID-19 vaccine was recommended for teenagers, according to the U.K. National Office. After the recent death of a California teenager, the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office reported, after extensive research and testing, the cause of death was determined to be Pfizer Biotech COVID-19 vaccination. The report added that no other conditions contributed to his death. Will the school children, will the school test children for antibodies to verify natural immunity before subjecting them to the risks of the injection? Will the school district warn parents of the risk of death and injury due to an experimental vaccine that Jeff Drake recommended to parents? Lastly, Indonesia and 33 districts in India have become free from COVID-19 due to authorization of Iremectin for treatment of COVID. If we can no longer trust the safety of our children to the school district, it's probably time to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. I appreciate your comments. Joey Lee, and then, if Kim Mulder could proceed now. Thank you.
Meeting Board Chair, School Members, Superintendent Drake. My name is Joey Lee. I'm currently the Public Health Director here in Hartsville County. I would like to start by recognizing the leadership within the district and the strong partnership to be able to help the public help with them, especially over the last three years that this school has been impacted by COVID-19. It has been very clear that the district has the academic, social, emotional, and physical health of its students and the well-being of the staff at the forefront of their decision-making. They have been diligent to request and review information and data, ask questions, and respond as best they are able for their district, much of which has been difficult at best. I am here in support of the district's decision to use masking as a tool and add prevention strategy in addition to what is currently in place in reducing the transmission of COVID-19 among students, staff, and the broader community. For this, I have three points for you. Number one, current community transmission of the virus is very high. To maximize protection of the community, prevention strategies may be strengthened or add even transmission worsens. While many states in the nation appear to be experiencing a decrease in cases, this is not the situation in Minnesota nor Otterton County. We began to see this increase in Otterton County in August, and in recent weeks, it swiftly continued. While illness and pediatric COVID-19 cases is generally mild, there are tragic examples, and this is not, or this is not the case. Pediatric cases are impacting current case rates and have community impacts, inclusive of spreads to other vulnerable populations. Minnesota data reported that on Tuesday, October 5th, pediatric and school age showed pediatric cases continue to sharply increase and have surpassed its spring peak for all age groups. Cases in ages five to 11-year-olds have surpassed all previous peaks. Case rates in ages five to 18 are generally higher than our overall population in the region. And the number of cases this school year had far outpaced last year. Number two, our transmission level and case increases are due to the Delta variant of COVID-19, in addition to easing out the prevention measures in our community. This variant is different than what we experienced last fall. With the Delta variant, one sick person can infect seven people compared to three people with the original strain of COVID-19. That means the original strain, you would see 27 cases after three rounds of transmission. With the Delta variant, it would see 343 cases after three rounds of transmission. And number three, recent studies show masks work, period. Masking reduces COVID-19 transmission. The preventative benefit of masking is derived from the combination of, one, source control during isolation, blocking respiratory particles from entering the environment, and, two, wear protecting, wear protection during inhalation, blocking the wear from inhaling particles in the air. I have quoted the CDC website, "Science Brief: Community Use of Cloth Masks to Control the Spread of SARS-CoV-2," where you can find further data and multiple studies for reference. In addition, I'd like to highlight two recent CDC mortality mortality briefing reports, MMWRs. I'll simply give you the title of that in much later's comments. Pediatric COVID-19 cases in counties with and without school mask mandate requirements, United States, July 1st to September 4, 21. And two, association between age-based school mask policies and school associated COVID-19 outbreaks, Mericopa and Pima comes Arizona, July, August, July, August 21. In closing, masking as a mitigation strategy would help prevent the transmission of COVID-19. Masks weighed with other mitigation measures will help ensure kids and teachers can stay healthy and in school and not have fever back to the possibility of distance learning, as was experienced last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I appreciate your research and your comments. Mr. Mulder, Kim Mulder.
Hello, my name is Tim Mulder. I have children in the school district. I'm also a pastor and a taxpayer in this community. I'd like to start by saying I think there are three main issues about the mask mandate that bother me. The first is who decided this? The second is how it was decided? The third is why it was decided? So who decided this? We were told in the October 4th email from the superintendent Drake that he had a conversation on November 1st with a state disease expert, and the cases are expected to decline with a potential peak in early November. So we have this mask mandate for the kids based on the potential. Now, we hear the story changing on the Minnesota Department of Health and others who are also involved in that conversation. The school board minutes show from August 23rd that Stephen Baker, sir, proposed a resolution to give the superintendent the ability to make these decisions by responding to the pandemic, as at 9:12 meeting last year on August 10. Why didn't the elected board want the responsibility of calling emergency meeting and vote on these matters if needed? I found that per school district policy 302, these personal judgments by the superintendent are not final until examined by the school board. So did the board review? I surely hope so, but we've no public right here of that taking place. Now, some of my children fall to the mask exemption criteria according to the CDC, so they're not required to wear a mask. I haven't informed their teachers of this as well. But by the way, I've done an excellent job and I'm also tired of these mask mandates. Yet, many of us are puzzled about why they may be for this on the each year. We've been constantly told by health experts, as quoted in the New York Post, "Children are less at risk for COVID," according to the vast community we have gathered over the last quarter and a half of the pandemic and the last year of vaccine research. So why was this done? It would appear because those students are not yet old enough to be vaccinated. And I'm not against vaccines. I'm not against masks. I'm just against mandating those things. Mandating someone to get the jab as well. But we need common sense. Most parents don't take their kids' flu shots, so they probably aren't going to get the COVID shot. We did mask mandates last year that did slow down COVID. Why do we think that's going to work this year? And if this is affecting everyone, why don't we mandate pre-k in grade six? Or is it proper handoff? You know, other being mentioned, just masks. Recent three Pfizer scientists admitted that natural immunity to the coronavirus offers better protection than the vaccine. Yet, the CDC, the State Department of Health, and PCV have addressed the possibility of natural immunity, as does this district, as many kids now have natural immunity against this respiratory illness. Also, as a pastor in the community at Calvary Chapel, I've talked with many families whose students have been holding at school over the mask mandate last year. I've talked with persons who have been treated differently from others, including teachers, and I'm sad to think that happened again to them again this year. This mask mandate tries to override the God-given authority of parents who govern the health of their children and of their family. Many of fellow consider the effects of masking on our kids, such as a psychological, developmental, and social tool in the stigma of being holy over not wearing a mask. Lastly, I'd like to see the elected school board vote to remove the mask mandate for the pre-k grade six students or the superintendent reverse his mandate decision. Thank you. I hope we have a better school year this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Amanda Davidson, and next looking for Kelsey McIntosh. Thank you. Go ahead, Amanda.
Hi, my name is Amanda. I hold a master's degree in clinical counseling and human services. I first just want to say that I have no clue what it's like being you, and I can only imagine how difficult all of this has been. Just thank you for hearing us tonight and honoring our voices as we share our support with the teachers and the staff, as well as the children in our community. As a professional in the field of mental health, there's a high value placed on proactive holistic approaches to appropriately assess potential impact of decisions being made. Given you two are in the human services field, I know it matters to you. You have a full understanding of the impact your decisions make. I do understand the data that you showed tonight, which combined show one aspect of the data being physical health. However, why are we failing to consider these other important aspects of data, such as studies showing that wearing masks shall increase social anxiety, difficulty in communication, increased stress, and overall negative psychological well-being? I'd like to know why, as those appointed to represent our community in the public schools, were these sets of data not taken into consideration? Community members and parents deserve a comprehensive explanation and data showing that the net overall health and wellness impact of mask wearing in kids ages three through 12 relative to the damage they cause. If we don't have these studies available, how do we know this decision was made in the children's best interest? Outside of the many mental health concerns, what are the results of the polls you've given to the very people affected by the staff shortage being teachers? What are their thoughts on this mandate being a solution? How have three-year-olds up through age 12 been affected by wearing masks in their classrooms? What do they see as being the solution? What learning and developmental changes have they noticed? What behavioral difficulties have they seen in their kids, in their classes? What's it like being a teacher wearing a mask, trying to communicate, teach, and care for these three-year-olds or 12-year-olds? What options do these teachers see as the most beneficial and effective for their classrooms? Do the teachers feel that the staff shortages that they experience warrant such a decision? I received an email from a public school teacher after this teacher learned that I was too concerned about this mask mandate. This is what the teacher shared, and it is being shared with permission. This teacher is speaking on behalf of other teachers at this school. She writes, "We do not want mask mandates at all. We are short-staffed." As a result, this is a decision they've made, thinking it will help. "We don't want kids in masks. We don't want to wear masks." It so impedes learning and development at these young grades. Kids need to see models and learn phonics and proper speech techniques. It's insane to think we teachers will have to try to properly teach and expect growth while wearing masks. This mandate completely disregards the mental health, learning, and development side of this equation. Also, threatening online learning is a tactic to force us into compliance and punish us if we do not. How is this a healthy response to leaders of our public school? A healthy, strong leader will not gaslight others, the public, and the people they serve. It is completely unhealthy. Please do not fall victim to the famously across the country where disagreement divides people. This is about our kids, and it is about our right to choose. We hope and ask that you would take this opportunity to lean in and listen to the voice of those you represent, all of us here tonight, and know that these are the people here trying to explain how we feel. Please listen to what we are saying. If you're not fighting for what's best for our kids and what your community is saying, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda Davidson. Kelsey McIntosh, McIntosh County.
Members of the school board, Superintendent Drake, thank you for having me today. My name is Kelsey McIntosh, and I'm here to, to date, to speak in support of our school district having a mask mandate to help slow the spread of COVID-19. I appear here today only as a parent of a child in this district, not in any other role or capacity. As the school board knows, I spoke to you in August, asking the school board and the school administration to follow the recommendations of the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health at that time and adopt a mask mandate. We didn't see eye to eye at that time, and I appreciate the fact that you are now adopting a mask mandate. I, I ask for the school administration and the school board to please take this seriously. I was pretty disappointed to read an article in our newspaper where we began with the administration voicing a personal dislike of masks and stating that there would be no disciplinary action or noncompliance. To me, if we only do this for two weeks and there is no disciplinary action or enforcement, we're setting up a mandate for failure. And in fact, it's not a mandate if there's no enforcement. Refusing to wear a mask, a violation of this mandate, should be handled like any other disciplinary issue, which there should be a clear behavioral plan for action. It's no different than students showing up for school in a swimsuit or with an offensive T-shirt on. Schools have dozens and dozens of rules that our students follow every day for the health and safety of everyone in the building, and it's efficiently and effectively dealt with by our administrators. And I'm asking you to do the same. I'm asking all parents to please help the school district and our school board and our community to get this pandemic under control. I've seen posts in the anti-mask parent group asking, "When is this going to end? What's going to be next?" Well, that, my community members, depends largely on what we do as parents and members of this community and what our school administration is trying to do in our schools, for which I commend them. This pandemic has dragged on and on and evolved into variants, because unfortunately, portions of our community have quite simply not done their part. We have the power.
Please refrain, please refrain from any negative behavior or action. This is a first warning, and if we continue to have that behavior, we will discontinue the meeting. Discontinue.
Thank you. We have the power to either be part of the problem or part of the solution. So please help us be part of the solution. Right now, that means masking up our kids to protect them, to protect their educators, and the whole community. This is a public health issue, nothing more. It is turning to a surface, and it does not have to be this way. This is a public health issue, and we should be listening to the experts in the field, the Department of Health, Otterton County Public Health, the CDC. And I appreciate Superintendent Drake's clear presentation tonight of the facts and the statistics in our community and what is being seen in our community for you now. My ask tonight is for you to please mask up your children in compliance with this district's mask mandate. We need to model kindness and compassion for others, being proactive to protect ourselves, and respect for rules and regulations for our children, and that starts at home. To our school administrators and school board, please take this seriously. Please help our administration with enforcement of this issue. And I'm going to leave you today with these final thoughts. It's time for our community to come together, not to be further divided. We live in a wonderful community. There are few things we can probably err on. We have excellent schools and educators in this community, and they should be supported and applauded for the work they do every single day, including Superintendent Drake. From what I'm hearing, they're exhausted. They want to focus on educating our kids. We all love the children in our community immensely. We want them to be safe and healthy. We want this pandemic to be over. So the way to do that right now is to mask up our children. Thank you all very much for the work you do for this community and for that opportunity this week.
Thank you for your comments. I'll just speak for myself to say, I really want to continue. I do want to hear the rest of this week is on the list. And so, we'll proceed next with Michelle Shear, and then coming down to prepare Joanna Kizel. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle, and I have two children currently enrolled in the grades that are included in the mask requirements. Recently, this question was posed. Do you think that parents who are opposed to masking are seen as being not supportive of our community and our school? I want to take this opportunity to be clear. I love our schools. My kids love their teachers. The masking issue does not change my feelings towards them, and I should hope that the feeling of me not wanting to mask my children changes their feelings towards me. Choosing to have my children participate in wearing masks or not is simply that it is a personal choice, a family choice, and it does not mean that we do not support our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. Joanna, Kizel, please take. I've been, and we'll look next for Amber Stinson.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. You guys are great up there. I'm used to talking as a teenager, so this might get a little awkward. I've got a few handouts, if that's okay. Is that all right? Can, can, I've got some handouts that Amanda just gave. These just come from Detroit Lakes Public Schools, and you guys can look at them. You don't have to, but I love the way that they have put a plan into place. I think a part of the problem, I'm sorry, a part of the problem with some of this stuff, for, for me, it seems like there isn't clear expectations. There isn't clear guidelines that have been put forth by this school district. And that's okay, but I think there can be moving forward. I think that putting the mitigation into place is a good idea, because then the parents, the staff, and the students know what to expect. And this is, this is what Detroit Lakes has put into place in their school district, and it's so, so neat. I also want to just say just a couple of things. Guidelines, policies, and procedures just need to be clear. I'm a huge proponent of health. I'm a nurse myself. I want people to remain healthy, masked, or loopy, but holistically for sure. The reality of students in this specification is requiring them to get masks is they get sick. They do. They get sick all the time. And if, and parents can attest to that, they are developing their immune systems and partly developing... immune systems, and part of developing their immune systems is getting sick and developing those antibodies to fight sickness properly. I don't know if anybody was around, but there was such a huge uptick in colds this summer. I know that people at the walking clinic can attest to that, and I have a suspicion to why that did happen is because we were masking up. Again, that's speculation on my hand. You don't have to take that into consideration, but that's just a suspect that I have, and that we are just not allowing our kids to play in dirt as much as they should, having a drink on the hoes as much as they should. Sorry, that's personal preference. None of the dates are the pops parties. Anybody that grew up in the eighties, the seventies chicken pots where you literally take your children and rub them on the other children so they can get that disease, so they could develop the antibodies to it. And that's just, it's, it's fine. We're not there anymore, and that's okay. I like natural immunity. I like vaccine immunity. They both work, and I like the option to choose. Every parent should have the option to choose. I'm just, I might be strange in my perspective in that, but it's just what I believe in. I appreciate those who are compromised. My heart beats for those that are truly suffering from this virus. I have seen family, of, of family friends that have passed away from this, and it's so sad, and I cried with them, and it's, I'm not negating the fact that there's a virus out there, but like what the people have spoken to is that it's not going away. It really isn't. It is here to stay, and the question is, is what can we do moving forward? So this is what I would ask you to consider. Consider getting rid of the contact tracing. Consider it. Just consider it, as some other school districts have. It has been shown, I know in the years, last year, as everybody was masked up, that contact tracing, I believe students and staff members that were sending home ninety to ninety-five percent of them never tested positive and never developed any symptoms of it of sorts, and it seems like that trend is going that way again this year. Um, uh, buh 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 buh, from this, uh, where is that? Okay, so that is what I would ask you to consider. And as a last ditch effort, if none of these things are put into consideration with the handouts that I passed off today, I would ask them maybe just to consider also putting a task force together. If none of the school board members want to be responsible type, and don't take this in the wrong tone or the wrong way, responsible for doing this, again, don't take this the wrong way, but consider putting a task force together, people that represent both sides, so a bipartisan committee of sorts to put together some sort of things moving forward. That is my suggestion. Again, just consider it, you guys. I really do appreciate your time, and again, you look great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Joanna, and the compliments. Very good. And we'll keep moving. I'm sure undoubtedly, if you notice, some speakers are going over three minutes, and everyone's being very respectful and close to that time limit, and so we're, like I said, not going to cut anyone off. Amber Seigman, please take the podium, and then we look for Ethan Johnson next.
Right. Thank you so much for allowing us a chance to voice our concerns and just, just allowing us a chance to speak about this mask mandate. I, I guess I'll just start with the statement in the email that went out regarding the mask mandate, said, "Wearing a well-fitted mask has stopped these stravagants from spreading to others." I know we're not here to do a, arguing about whether masks work or not, but this is data that I have found regarding that topic, so I really want to share it. The CDC recently published information stating that cloth masks will not protect against smoke particles. Smoke particles are much larger than virus particles. Virus particles are tiny. The typical virus is point three microns in size. Now, it doesn't matter if you know what a micron is, compared to the sizings that I'm giving you, it's point three microns in size. Coronavirus particles are typically point one three microns in size. Smoke particles are ten microns. If a person is not protected from a smoke particle by a mask, how can it possibly protect us from a virus that is one one hundred in size? Just some scientific facts put forward. So information like that, what causes us this fear is to question strongly the effectiveness of a mask mandate for our children. And on the opposite end, we consider the possible detriment to our children as a result. As I'm sure you're aware, kids in this generation are being attacked from every side, and mental health issues among our youth peppers exponentially, with suicide being a leading cause of death among our youth. I personally feel as a parent, I'll do whatever I can to prevent my children from being forced to wear the mask, which causes increased anxiety for my kids, which I spoke with them, spoke to them about. I heard from my children last year so many times, "Mom, I can't breathe in the gym." But we felt we often run around and we have to do things, but Mom, I can't breathe. It's difficult. I'm a healthcare worker, so I know what it's like to wear a mask day in and day out. I know exactly how I feel with the physical and cognitive fatigue associated with breathing air that is not as oxygenated as it should be. I experience overall tiredness, headaches, and a tiny difficulty with even working triple every call. In Googling the symptoms of hypoxia, I discovered the most common are restlessness, anxiety, headache, dizziness, and confusion. If it's difficult for adults to function normally under these conditions, how much more difficult is it for kids? I don't want this for my children, especially as they're trying to learn. OSHA states that the optimal range of oxygen in the air for humans is between nineteen point five and twenty-three point five percent. Their regulations forbid sending workers into a space with less than nineteen and a half percent oxygen. A recent video was circulated of a man who used a gas meter for his job. He demonstrated how putting the meter in front of his mouth without a mask did not set off the monitor. After he placed the mask on a space with a sensor inside the mask, and shortly after the mask started leaking, the machine showed the numbers as they declined, ultimately reaching as low as sixteen percent oxygen. How safe is that for our kids if that's below the level that is recommended for any worker by OSHA? Another question I have is why is it only the K pre-K through sixth graders can come The vaccine has been shown not to prevent transmission. The CDC Director Rochelle Walensky was recently on CNN admitting that it's now known that the vaccine cannot prevent transmission. So that I have difficulty understanding how that's, the ability to be vaccinated, whether these children are or not, is actually going to help with the older children as well. Ultimately, I thank you for your consideration. Thank you for what you do, and as other people have said, I just encourage you to really represent families in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seigman. Ethan Johnson, and followed by Caleb Cook.
So a old man lives in a house, and a hurricane is coming, and the water is rising. A police car comes by and says, "We're evacuated to a place. You gotta go. Let's go." He says, "No, I have faith. God will save me." And the water continues to rise, and he goes up to the second floor, and a guy in a boat comes by and says, "Buddy, jump in the boat. We gotta go." He says, "No, I have faith. I have conviction. I will be saved." And the water continues to rise, and it goes out of those roofs. A helicopter comes by, they throw the guy alive, and they say, "Dude, time to go. Let's go. Grab on." He says, "No, I will be saved. I have conviction." The water rises, and the man drowns, and he's walking up to the curly head, and God is there, he says, "God, what happened? Why didn't you save me?" And God says, "I sent you a car. I sent you a boat. I sent you a helicopter. What did you think safety was going to look like? I'm a teacher in this district, and I do not want to wear a mask, but I can win it anyway. Because I missed a day last week, and there was no substance available. My absence was covered with the teacher equivalent of masking tape and barbed wire, of my administrator taking a class, and a parent taking another class, and another teacher on their prep time taking a class. And I have four children in the district right now. I do not want them to go distance learning. I do not want to teach distance learning, because whatever the negative mental and developmental effects there are, distance learning is a far more disruptive process. And we can have masks in the same school, or we cannot have them and eventually go to distance learning. We have gone through this before. We have heard this song. We have danced this dance. We know. And God has written to us the knowledge and insight to stop this. All we have to do is work together. That's it. There's no real sacrifice unless you call wearing an mask a sacrifice. And when I consider my grandfather, who was in the tank division of World War II, and my grandmother, who was in the Navy at the same time, and when I consider my father, who volunteered for Vietnam, and other people who served this country in various forms, a mask doesn't qualify even as an inconvenience, much less a sacrifice. Especially in the past eighteen months, seven hundred thousand Americans already made that as a sacrifice. We do these things to protect each other. If you have diabetes and choose not to use insulin, that is a personal choice. If you can cough and give your neighbor diabetes, it is no longer just about you. We must be our neighbors' keepers. In World War II, all America climbed to Victory Gardens, bought treasury bonds, collected scrap metal, rationed butter, together as a community, all to save American lives overseas, and here we are debating answers. My father and grandfather would be disappointed. Even though we can stop, work together, and use the knowledge God has given us to help each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate it, and again, that's a clapping. Moving on to Caleb Cook as our next speaker. Welcome to the podium, and Dr. Gutsmer Wofo.
Thank you. My name is Caleb Cook. I'm a registered nurse. I work at a veterans' home. That's not necessary for qualifications to speak, but I didn't really want to come here and have comparative discussions about the science of whether or not masks work in the spread of diseases, because I think that that is a distraction from a real issue. What I think, first of all, that is really important, this group behind me, and we represent only a fraction of the people that have been sharing their concerns, is that the welfare and the education of our children is the parent's responsibility. We entrust them to the schools, but it's our will that the school should be carrying out, and we reject fundamentally that anyone but the parents have the ultimate decision of what kind of things go on our kids' faces. So the discussion about whether or not masks are effective, or what is the proper way to address COVID, is, again, it's a side issue. What we believe in is the freedom of parents to educate and protect their children the way that they see fit. We believe that authoritarianism and control, mandates, threats, promotion of fear are the wrong ways to protect our children. We believe that promoting personal responsibility, freedom of choice, is the right way to do One of the things that I keep hearing is about the experts say this, the experts say First of all, the experts say that wrong about COVID an awful lot in the past year and a half, two years. I'm not sure that they've gotten one thing right. So that was one reason why people distrust, when you say, "Well, the experts are saying this, and this is why we need to make this decision." That's not the proper way to make decisions when it comes to health and welfare of your kids, is this is what the current scientists or the experts say. We felt, we feel like we've been under the tyranny of the experts, and that's not the America that we want to live in. That's not the America that we want to raise our children in, where they are subjected to this kind of tyranny. And I will say that the experts, following the science, has led to the worst excesses and abuses of power, the destruction of lives, nations, and civilizations in, in, in the history of our world. And I love my fellow humans that are in this community and that are on this board. I love, you guys have taken up this mantle of leadership too much to allow you to be governed by the ideology that says a top-down approach is what is the best way to raise our children. We need to give that responsibility to the parents to make that choice, and we believe that it's the autonomy of the individual and the freedom of choice is what will build our country to be the country we want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And now I'll invite Dr. Gutsmer to the podium, and encourage Rachel Olson to come.
Hi. I'm Julie Gutsmer. I've been in the position for close to thirty years, and a general surgeon for over twenty-two. We also have three daughters in schools in Fergus. Nothing I say here represents anyone but me. I thought I would come to talk to you armed with scientific facts and data, but I know you, as school board members, have already scoured them. You already know this variant is at least twice as contagious as the original. On average, each person spreads it to seven to nine people. That masks contain spread, and that many, many school districts, including ours, have had success in preventing and containing outbreaks by masking as part of their strategy to continue in-person classes. You know, there is no question among the medical community and the major medical and public health organizations that mask-wearing is an effective way to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Am I going to go through all that? It's tempting to minimize the effects the pandemic has had on kids. They don't get sick as often as adults. They're less likely to die, but they do play a big role in driving spread. They bring it home to vulnerable adults. We have lost in the U.S. almost seven hundred kids to COVID. We don't know yet what the effects of long COVID are going to be on anyone. We know the children's hospitals have been filling up, and the cases continue to rise. We know almost two hundred thousand kids have lost their primary caregivers. How many other kids have lost other people really important to them or will continue to? I don't think we can minimize those psychological effects. We have to take COVID seriously. Our kids are still grieving the loss of an uncle they adored to COVID. If wearing a small face covering for even part of the day would have decreased the chance of carrying a virus to him, they would have dumped it that chance. You have been chosen to keep our kids safe and further their education. I know you're getting a lot of backlash. I'm sorry. In medicine, we talk about needing eight positives to counter one negative, and you are getting a lot of negatives. I want to be one of the positives. I admire and I appreciate everything you do, and I really appreciate how you put our kids first. I don't, I wrote down in your position, I told you this before, if you could make your decisions simply on the science and on the public health, it would be a lot simpler, but you have a lot of conflicting, competing considerations. I trust that you will make the best decisions regarding the safety and the education of our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Gutsmer. And now we'll hear from Rachel. And now we'll hear from Rachel Olson.
You got it. Hi, my name is Rachel Olson, and I currently am a first, third, and fourth grader in our school district. At first, I want to preface my quick speech by saying that this world of quarantining is not even my family. When my daughter was twenty months old, she was diagnosed with cancer, which required treatment for two and a half years. Because of this, we had quarantined a lot for a journey because she was immunocompromised. We knew the infectious period of viruses and bacteria before. It was cool to know, because we had to get high alert. Now, if that being said, we didn't expect a rule around us to be responsible for our children's health and safety. I don't believe in quarantining healthy people or having healthy children wear masks. We believe that the risks of wearing masks far outweighs the benefits for our children, especially since, as we now know, the dangers of this virus to children are miniscule. We need to take a more holistic approach to educating our kids, which all this, as I mentioned. They need to have normal social interactions, see each other's faces, and learn to read expressions of their classmates and teachers. They should not be treated solely as vectors for diseases. Last year, we made a hard decision to homeschool our family when we found out with short notice that masks were mandated. We were so relieved when we heard that the district was giving the families the right to decide this year. And we enrolled our kiddos because we love our public schools. It was nice for me to be there. Okay. Now that the masks are required again, we're going to have to reassess our enrollment in the district if requirements stay intact after the release of seven days. Since our family has already had the virus and had natural immunity, which only talks about, the risks of wearing masks outweighs the benefits. Like I stated earlier, we love our teachers, our administration. Like, we love you guys. You guys can look good up there. Good. This is a difficult decision to make. We hope you hear our concerns and let us, as a family, make that decision. Lastly, I just recently saw a call to action on social media for substitutes. Like, honestly, I could see before now, and even though I do like the page, and I saw that there were a call to action before. I am going to be personally vying if it helps our district to say masks are optional in his school learning. Also, if we go distance learning, we'll have to reassess our decision to state of the district, or pursue other options for our children's education. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express our family's concerns on this matter. I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments as well, Rachel. And Joanna Hartley Orsman will be our next speaker, followed by Tom Rufe.
First and foremost, I would like to thank everyone in the school district, everything they do for our children, especially our teachers who are teaching through a time they never would expect to teach through. I'm sure if you guys' teachers five, two years ago, they never expected to see masks in school, or some of them even know what online Zoom even existed. So to see that change happen last year for our students and the pride of our students, first, it was an amazing thing to see through the school district. I personally am a mother to a special needs preschool child. My child has an extremely rare comusal implication that only has fifty study cases go by. Most of you probably remember of it. In fact, I didn't know until my child was diagnosed as a very sick infant. And so I had to make decisions for his education. I moved to Minnesota from California because I knew schools here were, that was a priority for me and my child. And the day that I learned about mask mandate, it was just put in a note. I didn't receive any notes. It was just a note in my parent pocket in my child's preschool. And it was not addressed to me personally, wasn't addressed to any of the parents. And I went home and I cried for hours, I'll be honest, because I did not know what that would mean for my child home support. My child has special sensory issues. My child was in speech therapy. I cannot comprehend speech therapy. As a previous student in speech therapy, how it can be effective through mask-wearing. They use tongue depressors. They use pronunciation. They use phonics. And these are not things that can be achieved with the teacher wearing masks as well as with the student wearing masks. And so I asked the teachers, I said, what is this going to look like? And they didn't have an answer for me. They said, well, we'll make a meeting. We'll get back to it. And I had to wait for days and just be in fear of my child's health and how school function. I pay out of pocket as a preschool parent. I chose to have my child in preschool. I chose for his benefit. I chose what I felt was best. And now I have to consider pulling him out of preschool and hiring a private speech therapist to come into our home and to pursue homeschooling, because he will not be successful in speech therapy with masks. He cannot succeed in this environment. And that's how our school should be. Our school should be a place for all children to succeed. I'm sure we can all agree on that. And I think this needs to be a choice. Yes, there are risks and benefits in every situation. But in my situation for my child, the benefits of no masking far outweighs the risk of a mild case of COVID that he may have. And yes, we can talk about he may be with his grandparents. But that is a minischool risk that I'm going to check for my child's education. And if I need to withdraw him and pursue homeschooling for the better of his education, that's what I and many parents would do. It is our job as parents to do the best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Appreciate your comments. And now we welcome Tom Rufe to speak, followed by Dr. Joellen Coleman-Petrick.
Thank you, Adam Schaefer, board members. I am here to speak in support of the board and the concepts that goes into our decision-making. As elected official, I am all too aware of what happens on the segment of your constituents disagreeing with decisions that are made. When I make a decision as elected official, I take into consideration not only the feedback received from interested parties, but the reasoning, facts, and logic that affect the situation. It is our responsibility to take into account marginalized communities as well as the greater good. I sincerely thank all of you for the time you invest in our community to make it a better place. We need to recognize that we are all human, and we all make mistakes. In the history of medicine, for example, one was numerous occasions where something was promoted, is negatively accepted, only did become quite the opposite. Science is not a product. It's a process. A key part of science is healthy skepticism, trying to disprove accepted theories. Does this mean that all medical science is flawed? Absolutely not. But it is nonincredible. We also need to respect the time and effort that researchers put into their craft. We still need to keep our minds open and stay educated. It's not much of a secret that I believe that vaccinations are very important, and masks are essential to help slow the spread of disease. I believe that requiring a mask will at least do something to slow the spread of that disease. With all that said, if you take away one thing tonight, let me this. We all need to be aware of the outside forces that have a substantial effect on the conversation that we are having at this very moment. I have seen too many personal attacks and too much name-calling on social media. And while it may initially satisfy my urge, our society has let suffers in the long run. When we generate conflict on social media, it generates more opportunity for those giant corporations to harvest our data and use that to drive away to infer. Social media users are a commodity to be bought, traded, and sold. Learning how to manipulate that product has the benefit of the ability to change how people perceive and react to sensitive topics. This information is embedded back in their algorithms in order to steer us toward more conflict and more profits, becoming a vicious cycle. Ask yourselves, does Facebook have the best interest of our school district and students in mind? No. Their objective is profit, seemingly at any cost. Are you willing to be a pawn on their board? Instead, try this. Find someone you disagree with and sit down for a cup of coffee. It's going to take some practice, but try listening more than speaking, and try to put yourself in their shoes. This is behavior that we have to modeling for our children. It's not going to be easy, but nothing that's worthwhile is. With some hard work, I bet we finally have much more in common than we realize. Highlighting our differences fills out that twenty-four-hour news cycle. But let's start focusing on our similarity rather than those differences. In closing, in closing, I thank the school board for having the courageous conversations, thinking quickly, and taking decisive action to make our schools as safe as possible. I would also ask that our entire community stop. Take a deep breath. Take a step back. In the end, we live here together, and we need to do everything we can to come together to do what we feel is best for our community. We need to do our best to take our emotions out of the discussion. Take a break from social media. It is much too convenient to embed yourself in an echo chamber of like-minded thoughts. And the more time one spends in that place, the more deeply rooted one's beliefs can become. And what suffers is civil discourse. We're better with this, folks. Let's get together, get back to the basics, and start relearning how to have conversations with each other. Nobody is going to get everything they want. But we can keep striving for the most equitable solutions, and we can keep that power in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rufe. I appreciate your comments. Dr. Joellen Coleman-Petrick. And then please move forward to our proxy for Mike Thorson.
Hello. Close. My name is Joellen Coleman-Petrick. I am a mother, I'm the mother of three children in K through six in Fergus Falls Public School System. For the last six and a half years, I have also had the pleasure and the honor of serving this community as the cardiologist at Lake Ridge Clinic and Hospital. I would first like to say thank you to each and every board member here today. You have been placed in an impossible position, making a decision that either way will be faced with great resistance by a portion of our community. I support their decision, and I thank you for it. I believe you made the right decision. I ask that everyone in this room today treat these individuals with kindness and respect. I would also ask the same, that you treat all medical care providers in this room today with kindness and respect. We are not the villains or tyrants here. COVID is. Just because what we tell you is not what you want to hear, it is the truth. Please be aware, there's so much misinformation out there that tells you what you want to hear. Just like everyone here, I'm tired of COVID. I've had COVID. My family has had COVID. I've had many friends, family, and neighbors struggle with COVID. But I also had several close family members, close family friends die of COVID. I also had many patients in our community die of COVID, and I've treated many more patients that now are dealing with long-term complications from the infection, including long-term heart issues. It is a serious medical threat to our community. In the twenty-five years I have worked in healthcare, I have worn a mask for countless hours to prevent infection in my patients because it is the right thing to do. For those of you here today that disagree with the school board's decision, I get it. I agree with you. Wearing a mask can be uncomfortable. It can be hot, claustrophobic, itchy, and can cause skin irritation. But it is a small temporary price for us to pay to keep our community healthy. I can personally assure you that from my personal experience, wearing a mask does not deprive you of oxygen or cause brain damage. It is also, it does not promote infection in the person wearing it. As Dr. Gutsmar and myself always wear a mask when going into the operating room to protect a patient from infection, we ask that you send your children to school wearing a mask to protect each other, their teachers, and the school administration. This is a very transmissible virus that we need to contain with several precautions, including having our kids wear masks, washing hands, and staying home when sick. I get it. We don't like to wear masks. But we need to wear masks to protect our community. Our children need to wear masks to protect our community. Please lead by example and wear a mask. Have your children wear a mask to school and talk to them about why it is important to wear one. Our kids are smart and resilient. They will understand why it is so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman-Petrick. Appreciate it. And do we have a proxy for Mike Thorson at Lucius to speak?
No.
We have the next best thing. Sorry, I, we were on our way back from Milwaukee today. No one was going to make it. So I don't have anything prepared. Man, this is nerve-wracking, isn't it? Jeez. There's people behind me. I just wanted to make sure, I know I emailed all of you separately and corporately, so you already know where I stand. And I wanted to make sure that I was here to support you and our staff and our administrators. I actually disagree with the board, but I did disagree with you because I thought we should have done this a long time ago. I, at the beginning of the school year, emailed all of you that position, and I reiterated it when you came up with this new mandate. And I would encourage you to consider doing it through the entire school. But I just wanted to make sure that I was here, that I could state my position, that I support you. Even when I do disagree with you, I respect you, and I am so glad that I know a lot of you, and I know where you're coming from, and I know that your hearts are in the right place, and that your minds are working really hard to try to figure out how to get ourselves through this next phase. And first of all, because Minnesota, we're behind on almost all trends, whether it's fashion or pandemics. But we've been seeing going around in all the different parts of the country on the coast, earlier this summer and fall, it's now just gotten, it's going to recede, it's going to go away. But during this period, I think this is a prudent and appropriate step. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mike Thorson. And now we'll have Dr. Tyler Lacy speak, followed by Debbie Kaminsky. Welcome to the podium. If you're here. All right. Continue. We can check back for Dr. Lacy. If the doctor arrives later, Debbie Kaminsky, please take a break. Thank you.
A mom wrote me, "My high school son, let's call him Brent, was a high achiever, football, many other sports, straight A's, a happy teen, and then COVID hit. Our son got really bad headaches, and we tried everything, but it just got worse. We brought him home for distance learning, and over the next few months, I've watched my once-active, outgoing son slowly lose interest, isolate more, talk less, and lose significant amounts of weight. What was happening to my once-happy son?" One day, I snooped on his phone and found texts where he was talking about suicide. He's now going to therapy on two different meds, trying to regulate his severe depression and anxiety. I'm a master's degree in psychologist. I've been doing that for more than thirty years. And I just want to ask you, when was the last time you checked in with your parents and said, hey, how are your kids doing? I did that yesterday, and my inbox blew up overnight. Blew up. I can't even tell you how many stories I got from kids that are really struggling with these mask mandates. I got one from a mom who said, "My eight-year-old has endured mask-wearing in kindergarten, first grade, and now second grade. And the stress of this has landed us in the ER with severe migraines, and even to us in Mayo Clinic." My kindergartner, another mom, said, "My kindergartner hydroventilated. Her face broke out until I took the masks off." You know, our quote, Superintendent, all due respect, Superintendent Drake, that every community should set the welfare of its children at its highest priority, that is not happening with mask mandates. Another mom came to me, and she said, "My daughter comes to me with fear, crying, 'Mommy, I can't breathe,' wearing a mask." I've heard about children digging in trash cans to find masks because they can't find their own mask. So they're digging in a trash can to find a mask and putting it on so they don't get in trouble. That's not okay. This is the harm that these decisions are making with our kids. I got so many more moments like this in my inbox. Please look these kids in the eyes behind their covered faces and know that this is what your decisions are doing to our children. I'm Debbie Kaminsky, as I said, and I really care about kids. My kids went to school here in 2014. In 2017, they graduated. So Superintendent Drake, I don't know you personally. But I do know that you have the best interest of our kids in mind. And I do know that there is so much misinformation going on out there. I want to let you know that sixty-eight percent of our children have identifiable signs that masks are harming them. Sixty-eight percent. I hesitate to go here, but I'm going to do it anyway, because I want you to hear this. This is important. Child abuse is defined as the physical and emotional mistreatment of children. Masking them so they can't breathe, humiliating them, shaming them, and isolating them is abuse. It is abuse. This will have long-term effects on our children. And I, somebody else mentioned that suicide is up, is up fifteen percent. We say, stop the spread, stop the spread. This has a ninety-nine point nine percent recovery rate across the board, not just for the young, but even for the elderly. I think the elderly is at ninety-nine point four percent. Has a recovery rate. We know we can heal people. The CDC says on their website, there is zero data that supports that mask-wearing saves lives. That is true. This virus is not about, or this whole thing is not about a virus. It is about compliance. I want you to actually do a little research and find out who the CDC is. Go do some research. Again, with all due respect, I think so many are only looking at mainstream media. Mainstream media is lying to us. They are lying to us. Children's need faces and physical touch for emotional and physical health. It boosts their immunity. It creates empathy. It helps them feel affirmed as a human being. It helps them feel affirmed as a human being. What are we doing to our kids? We are shutting them down. Again, never before have we not had a virus going around. Do you remember when we closed schools? I remember when it was my kids were in school, and we closed a school because there was too, there were too many sick kids, so we closed one of the schools. It's happened. We will never not have variants. We will never not have viruses going around. Wearing masks does not impact that. We really are being deceived. I ask you, why are we being forced by our government, who is for the people, for forced masks? We are being deceived, and I ask you to go search on DuckDuckGo, go search on Rumble, go search on BitChute. Why have our most-
Your final comments?
Yes, and I was told that I could have Adrienne Harwell's time because she's not here. So if I could just finish up, I will do that.
You could, that would be fine. I was aware that you were having that expectation.
Yeah, that's what I was told. So, okay. I want to ask you, why have our most intelligent people, our lawyers and our doctors, been censored and threatened to have their licenses taken away when they speak out about this? Why? We have to ask these questions. What is really going on? It is not about the virus. And I beg you, and I ask you, go do the searching, go check out drsherry10pennant.com, see what this is really about. Do you know 2,300 years ago, Arabs discovered that forcing people to cover their nose and mouth broke their will and their individuality, and it made them submissive? This from a mom. "My son was given a timeout in front of his class last year for not wearing a mask. They tried very hard to break him. Other kids were encouraged to bully him into wearing this." This is not about a virus. I beg you to do your research, and I just want to say, my closing statement, I believe you are doing the best that you know how with the information you have. I really, in my heart, believe that, as do so many of us. But we, the people in the United States of America here in Fergus Falls, do not consent to masking our kids. That is our constitutional right, and our Constitution clearly states that you have to, that we, you have to get our consent in order to do this. So I thank you for your time today, and I just want to end this with saying we do not consent to masking our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Please, go to the podium, please, for comments, and then followed by Ali Hauw.
Sorry I'm late.
You didn't miss your slot, you're just perfect.
I was at a meeting, so I was taking care of six people. I'm not really sure why I'm here, this is a lot of discussions, including my partner, I don't know if she's still here, but it was a good discussion. She did a nice job. Sorry, Dr. Coleman. They call the surgeon in when there's trauma, all right? Look around, this community is in trauma, all right? I've worn a mask for 38 years. I've had physicians for just that long. Everything I did, put a mask on. And I can tell you, when I put that N95 mask on and just stood there and operated, I got headaches. I got headaches. I'm used to wearing masks. I'm not even trying to do it in a running, or playing in gym, or all that other stuff. These masks, you want to stop the virus? The example of it is like trying to stop a mosquito with a chain link fence. Good luck, all right? Yes, I sneeze. These masks are designed for shit behind me. Not for, that's all they're designed for. So I'm still not sure why I'm here, but I'm pissed. I take care of people. I, you know what this is about? This is about fear. This is about fear. I'm going to stare right out. This is about death. Everybody around here is scared that a kid may die in this community, and I'm terrified of it too. But I'm the guy out there who pronounces the kids when they die. We all are, I'm not going to say her name, an 18-month-old little girl that backed her car. Her mom was a nurse. Maggie was her primary doctor, and we tried to keep her gone as long as we could, but it was time that I pronounced her, because nobody else around here could. Because why? Because it's not about our science. You can find anything you want about science. You can go read any, I can prove either side of this anytime, but anywhere I want, I can find the data that'll show what you think is right. You heard that phone pick-up right there. Social media, you heard it. Tom Roof, we're going to accent job. I'm growing, social media thing is just a wave. So what do I do when I have to make life or death decisions? Because effectively, that's what you're being asked to decide. Somewhere along this department, you're going to have to decide, and your decision is going to make a life or death decision for some kid, or an adult, or my, like my partner said, her kids are, because that kid might have brought back to that uncle, and he died and he died. We all are going to die. It's a given. You cannot change it. It's about faith. This is about between good and evil. Good and evil. Who do you believe? What is your foundation? This city has 17 Lutheran churches in its environment. You can't turn without seeing a church. Detroit, Michigan, you can't turn without seeing a liquor store. I am blessed to be in this community, as are all of you. But now you're put in a position to make a decision. How do I make my decisions? With my experience of 35, 38 years, with what I've seen. You know what the real magic is of what surgery does? You take, and what do you need my services tonight? Chiropractor, ulcer. When you perforate your ulcer, you're going to call, and I'm going to show up, and I'm going to give you the information real quick. I'm the expert, I'm going to tell you what you need, and 99% of the time, you're going to believe me. Most of them are hurt, so they have no choice. But these people are hurt, and they have no choice, and I assure a word will, and I'm looking to you to make a decision. How do I make those decisions? I pray. I pray on the way in. Anyone that shows up tonight, I pray on the way in. When I walk in, I pray for, I pray for, I pray for the team. I ask for that. Fixing your ulcer? Well, this is the part I'm just supposed to know. I don't take any responsibility for that. I just put the two sides together. Just do this little surgery. Anybody that monkeys can do it. Muggies do it, Detroit. God heals you. He mends that together in 24 hours, it's a lot of time, well, we can want. I take you through those places, but I give a credit. I'm a tool, but the maker. Look to your maker. Do what you need to do for the people who have entrusted us to you. Put yourself in their shoes. I don't know how you put yourself in that one of yours, whose child has to wear a mask, yet can't do her physical therapy or speech therapy. I don't know when you make that decision. You mandate this across the board? That's a tough place to go. I would suggest, and it's just a suggestion, pray right there. Come real close to that, and I know what you need to do. And then I would ask you to say, who does God put in charge of these kids? Their parents, all right? God gave each one of these kids to their child, I'm sorry, each one of these kids to their parents. And they speak for them. They may be wrong, they may be dumb, they may be perfect in their decisions, but it's still their responsibility. It's not yours. God gave it to them. Honor their wishes. Either side of the fence. And then let them decide if they want to go to school here or not. They'll go to another school and pass up, so be it. If they want to stay here and not, so be it. Take care of your people. They go, it's not here. God wins. And a lot of these people stop figuring consent, they deny your consent, it's against the Constitution, but that's never story. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
My name is Ali Hauw. I'm a Lutheran pastor here in Fergus, but more importantly, I'm a parent of a first-grader at Adams Elementary. I am only representing myself with my comments tonight. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your work and the care given to COVID-19 policies and school safety. It is a challenging time to be a leader. I know and respect the gravity of the role to lead a community and the decisions that must be made, especially over these last 18 months. In my profession as a faith leader, I work with students of all ages. During this pandemic, I attempted to teach those students virtually at times. I cannot lie to you, it was difficult. It was difficult because the students couldn't build the same relationships they would if they were learning in person. It was difficult because not, because not everyone's internet was fast enough to keep up. It was difficult because of distractions at home that they would not have had if we'd have been in person. It was difficult because we learned that not everyone's definition of what is safe is the same. I've talked to parents who are on all sides of the issues before us tonight. Some have no interest in taking any safety precautions for many reasons. While others feel that they are having to choose between keeping their children safe and sending them to school. In my opinion, public school should always be a safe place for all students and staff. And for that reason, we entrust the school board and the school district to make certain decisions, including things like a dress code, which are enforced regularly. As a school district, I know that your number one priority is making decisions that are at the best interest of students and staff. I would think that would begin with their safety in all aspects and the most effective way of teaching and learning. I am just as tired and done with this pandemic as the next person. And if we could live this year in two parallel universes, living in separate ways, compare the outcomes, that would be great, but we can't. And being tired does not give us an excuse to do our best when it comes to the health and safety of those around us and in caring for our neighbors. Our personal freedoms do not negate our responsibility to the common good, especially as a public school district and for the children under our tenure. My son has been wearing a mask willingly and voluntarily before the mandates started today. He understands that it protects him and others. He wears a mask to stay in-person at school rather than at home away from his friends, learning through a screen. He has learned the importance of thinking of people around him and how his decisions affect other people. I have a lot that I can learn from my seven-year-old. Our kids are much more resilient than we give them credit for. They can survive and even thrive while wearing a mask during the school day. Children need time together in person, and wearing a mask is a way to ensure that can happen as safely as possible. We also know that in-person learning is a much better option intellectually, socially, and emotionally for students, not to mention for enabling parents to work and keep our businesses open. A mask mandate is better for our whole community. Families are depending on you to follow the science and protect the health and safety of our kids and community. Our kids deserve to go to school without worrying about getting sick and spreading the virus. We shouldn't ask our young kids and their parents to choose between going to school and staying healthy and safe. I am asking you to continue to listen to the experts, follow the science, and not make masks optional, especially for our most vulnerable unvaccinated students, and striving to remain in-person for school this year. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for all you do as leaders in our schools.
Thank you, Pastor Hauw. And I'll go forward, Jessica Daniels, followed by Dr. Naomi Weishman. And I noticed, I've noticed a little bit of relaxing as we come to Dan. We'll still try to adhere to the three minutes and to the lack of collaborating commentary. Finish up on a positive note.
All right, thank you for hearing us out today. My name is Jessica Daniels. I do have a master's in cellular and molecular biology, and I'm a college biology instructor for 10 years. I also had to teach in the pandemic. I was hybrid and then fully online last year, so I do understand the challenges of educating during the pandemic. I'm also a graduate of Fergus Falls High School, and I have a senior in the district who spent last year in distance learning and lost many of those facial experiences. I'm here because I want our kids, our educators, and community to be safe, and because I believe in-person education is the best for most. So I wanted to talk about how masks work from scientific perspective and help myself. I have had some misinformation on how masks work or don't. When we re-earsteek, we are releasing respiratory droplets. And we see here a breath in winter, we're seeing that frozen breath. The largest drops are heavy, and they drop to the ground or landing surfaces, and the smaller ones evaporate. They become really, really small particles called aerosols. Unfortunately, those aerosols can actually linger in the air for up to three hours. We now know that the coronavirus that causes COVID-19 spreads via respiratory droplets in the air. So when the virus-contained droplets are inhaled, the virus attaches to receptors on the surfaces, about your cells, and the respiratory tract. It's kind of like a key to getting in the cell. Once it's in the cell, the virus hijacks the cell's machinery, and it basically becomes a little virus-making factory. All right, now we have an O infection. But for infection, it's not whether you're exposed to coronavirus, it's actually how much you're exposed to. So if you think of the coronavirus as an invading army, our body's defenses can handle only a small number of invaders. Too many invaders will overpower those defenses and actually result in the takeover of the cell. Masks work because we decrease the amount of virus we're exposed to. The coronavirus is small, like someone mentioned, but what they didn't mention is that it doesn't, it doesn't travel by itself in the air. It has to travel via respiratory droplets, and those respiratory droplets are 50 to 1,000 times bigger than the coronavirus itself. Masks block respiratory droplets, but they don't back, they don't block very small oxygen and carbon dioxide gases. They can easily freely pass in and out. Multiple studies have actually shown that multi-layered block masks block up to 80% of all respiratory droplets, and about 50 to 70% of those very fine, small particles. By blocking those droplets, we're decreasing the amount of virus released into the air, and so we're making it harder to reach that infectious dose. We don't reach that infectious dose, we're likely to become infected. All right, so individuals that, I'm sorry, there's also about 50% protection of filtering for those that are actually wearing a mask. So individuals that wear a mask do have some filtration protection, but they're still putting others at risk if those in environments are not wearing a mask. So somebody's freedom, we've heard a lot about freedom today, so somebody's freedom to not wear a mask is actually putting other people's children and families at risk. Personal freedom ends when it harms others. I support a full mask mandate of pre-K all the way through 12 students. I want to keep our kids, families, and communities safe. Thank you, and thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. I appreciate your comments. Do we have Dr. Naomi Weishman available to take the podium? Welcome. And we'll look for Jessica Tomford to be prepared for next slide.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to offer two comments as both Chief Medical Officer and Lake Region Health Nurse, and as parents of young schoolchildren. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that we're all here for the same reason. We care about our kids and what we want to do best for them. We know that in-person learning is what is best, and at school, we're all working towards keeping them healthy and in school. I want us to all keep this in mind as we have the coffee, as we look to this topic. A few points I'd like to address. First, the idea that the virus, because it is dangerous to injury population, while most people do recover from it without hospitalization or death, the point of concern about it is that how we act as individuals has something to do with how likely we are to the bottom of world to catch it. Over the last few months, the Delta variant has spread through the area of the Vanderstreets of illness, hospitalizations, and deaths right here in our community. Today, COVID-19 continues to circulate, and many of us in the healthcare have seen people we know and care about become very ill or die. Secondly, the idea that the virus is a dangerous danger to people. The amount of pediatric hospitalizations and ICU admissions across the state continues to climb since July, and locally, Lake Region has seen The amount of pediatric hospitalizations and ICU admissions across the state continues to climb since July, and locally, the language has seen several hospitals. Our children who have been ill enough to be transferred to other hospitals. Thirdly, we've seen workforce impacts. The healthcare organization, we have various of workforce shortages, just like the schools or a greater restaurants. The staff members have children who have to get out of work due to either their children's illnesses or exposures, causes difficulty in making sure that our healthcare needs are areas of staff to provide the services the community needs. Masking has been a proven measure to protect the people from becoming infected from COVID-19. While wearing a mask can be uncomfortable, it's one of the best ways we have to show, to slow down the spread of COVID and other substances that are on the rise right now, like RSV and influenza. As you've heard it say before, it takes a village stories to check it out, and I think we have great village and passionately caring people in this community. Magic Hall West and Village decided to do what we can to slow the spread of the virus, because it's a right and a duty, and it's taking part of caring for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shum, I appreciate your comments. Jessie Tomford, and then followed by Dwayne Stender.
Hi there, I'm Jessie Tomford, I'm an electrical engineer by trade. I'm a graduate, an honor from nineteen ninety-five, and my wife and fifteen years, we spent most of our lives here in Fergus Falls. I know, most people who are electrical engineers, they probably think, oh, more technical speaking, reasons for science. So, don't worry, I won't address any technical tonight, I've heard so much intelligence was in the servant here already, I just ended up looking foolish anyway, so. Since this is a school board meeting and school's focused on teaching and marketing, I'd like to do the one thing that is always helping me, and ask questions. So if you indulge me, I also want to mention, I really appreciate people who serve on the school board, and who take the time and effort and weight from their values and interests to show love to others by making hard decisions. And decisions that are often difficult for me to accept, so thank you for serving us. To start, it might be helpful, helpful to establish common ground with some points most everyone can agree upon. No one likes this virus in the way it's being used to divide us. This is the most common thing I hear from people of all perspectives. This is a community of diverse views, but most everyone around here loves their neighbor and wants to live peacefully as much as it is up to them. No one likes others forcing them to parent a certain way, or usurping their authority with their own child. Parents are especially sensitive to anyone who is charged over their children, and they can't be there. Now, there are a lot of seemingly no-one situations that everyone seems to be facing in some form, or in a decoy, and we all recognize that. We also recognize there's many employers who are requiring people to wear masks, their employees who visit. So what, my question really is, what are people doing when given the choice? How many people here tonight wear masks when they're out in public in buildings? And how many people here tonight require their children or grandchildren to wear masks when they're out in public in buildings? And how many people do you see wearing masks out in public in buildings? How many little children do you see wearing masks out in public in buildings? You know, we can sit here and use statistics, studies, ad nauseam, but just being aware of what is going on around Fergus Falls provides insight into what our neighbors are really thinking. I mean, I'm just going and shopping, I see that about five percent. That's a good guess, and I haven't seen any children lately. So it's a big question to think about as we try to make decisions, and I know this is not going to be easy for many of you, maybe it is, I don't know, it won't be easy for me. But have people in the last nineteen months, have they settled into their reviews on masking? Are we gonna, are there more facts we hear as those things? Maybe, maybe we can change it, but everybody has to do their own research. So what brings a diverse community together? Will forcing little children to wear masks bring people together? Why don't we tell the little child they must wear a mask, but then we won't enforce that requirement in school if a parent is insistent that they don't wear a mask? Does this teach children to trust and respect their teachers and adults? How will, how will our little ones feel if they're singled out as the only group required to wear a mask? Is the cost of damaging their little heart worth whatever gains we may think we could make against the virus? Anyway, thanks for listening, God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Stender. And our final speaker. Sorry, it's your Tomford. I said earlier with mask board report due, so I'm sorry. Alright. And so, Mr. Stender.
Sorry. Yeah, thanks for opening this up, appreciate you so much. I know a lot of you are wondering what in the world I'm doing here, we have a lot of kids. And I think our kids are at almost every opportunity for education in Fergus Falls, so it's kind of cool. So, in that, I don't have a lot of science knowledge, I'm guessing that a lot of you, when you joined the board, didn't join it to say, I'm excited to tell people what to do with their health, right? You didn't sign up and say, I want to tell people that we should wear masks. So, my question is, why are we doing it then? Because school primarily is a mediating institution, right now, a ton of, I would say, distrust in mediating institutions. So mediating institutions are institutions that exist to bridge a gap or provide a bridge for somebody to move from dependence to independence, right? Schools designed to be a mediating institution, I should pick a better word, I should. Schools are designed for that, media is designed for that, media, newspapers are designed to help us move from a place of dependence to independence, to be able to think on our own. Right now, what we have happening inside our culture is a lack of trust in mediating institutions. That's what we're seeing here probably in our world, but I would say, what's incredible for me to watch tonight, I hope you guys feel the same way, is that a lot of these people that are coming up, that have their own ideas, their own opinions, went to Fergus Falls High. And they developed an understanding of independent thinking by coming to Fergus Falls High. And so I would say, as we look at this, rather than have these people who are trusting their kids into your employ, for your providing a mediating institution, I don't think we should put them in a place where now they distrust our local, our local educating body. Because you're not here to be a hospital, a hospital does care about all of the things, they do all the mitigations. A hospital is also about the minute it's on the end to have pizza and go out tonight and have whatever dessert I want to have, right? But there's freedoms that we have, and there's mediating institutions that have taught me to think on my own and to process on my own. And I think what's happening here tonight is in danger, probably one of the biggest challenges that's gonna come out of COVID, and that's a lack of trust. And for all of these people to place our kids into your school, you don't have to do this. There's no other school that I know of that's saying, hey, for pre-K to sixth grade, we're gonna mask up. No other school that I know of. So I don't understand why we would put these people that are now trusting their kids into your employ to now step into this and have them distrust the mediating institution that prepared them to think on their own. So I would just ask you to reconsider this, you don't need to do this, we're managing this at home. I bet, whatever, how many kids have a candy truck? They've all been sick, we manage that. Parents have that responsibility because they're our kids. We want you to help us go from dependence to independence, but don't make us distrust you in this decision. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stender. And then our final speaker this evening will be Makon.
Well, I have a speech here, and as I've said here, I've been rewriting it like six times, so I'm just abandoning the speech, just as we try to wrap up. Well, I want to do like whole parental responsibility thing, I totally agree with that, like just being a parent's choice and freedom to choose, no matter which time you're on. You know, I was able to go into a lot of the schools before last Monday, I bought a pair of jaws at Adams, I have a special needs son at Cleveland, and so I spent time there. And it was fascinating, we see where people did choose, and we did get that right, and that ability, and people were masking and people weren't, and I think it was going really well. And, I mean, a lot of people, we don't believe what some science, I don't know what you guys are gonna do. I mean, we have doctors in this room that come up here and giving you the exact opposite views. I mean, we know that, we have, we have people in our community that are on different sides, so I don't, I mean, we have science that backs both ways, so I have no idea what I'm doing, because we really don't, so all I can think is that we have to have freedom like we had, and I think that was a great choice to start the school year with. You know, the other thing I love is that, I mean, I am against the masks, and, but I have so many friends who are on the good side, and I love that I know you all, I love that you can be community. And I totally did a Tom Rufe statement of getting off of social media, I came on social media because of this, because I wanted to kind of see where everybody was at with this. But I have been off since December, and my life has been so much better, so encouraging for everybody to get off of social media. That's just my own personal opinion on that. But, my husband and I have five kids in the school district, and, you know, we are conservative Christians, and we really see things that are happening in our society and in our nation, and know that that is some concerns, but we have a lot of friends who withhold their kids from the school district, and our desire is never to do that. Our desire is to stay here, we want to be amongst people who disagree with us, I want my children to grow up, know what they believe, and, and so the responsibility with people they disagree with. And so I think the only way we can do that is by giving people a freedom to choose. So, I guess that, and the only thing I can give messages as the meeting's on, and with your speech, Mr. Gray. And there's just still a lot of questions out there. And I think with everything that has been decided and as things have gone, we, we don't know what we're supposed to do, I mean, we feel like we just talk that view, and we don't know what we're going to get back, and I, I know I've heard that we should have representatives that should come together and voice their opinions. But we, we want a voice, we want to be able to choose, we want to be able to talk with you, and so I think we want to hear from you what, what, what impact this had or didn't have. And so I guess we'll get your position, I know this isn't the backing board, but we do want to hear from you after this, and that's it, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Makon. So that concludes our listening session over tonight, and I do appreciate.
Was there any chance to, or just to put the stage down there?
No, we're gonna adhere to our protocol, just to be fair to everyone. So, I, I know I speak for the entirety of the board when I say having this kind of public engagement in how our school is run is refreshing and invigorating. We've heard a variety of perspectives tonight, and I do appreciate that we have accomplished this with respect and been able to appreciate other people's points of view. So that will conclude our listening session tonight, and thank you all for your attendance and your participation.